Notice of a regular meeting of the City of Friendswood Planning and Zoning Commission to be held Thursday, October 19th, 2017, beginning at 7:00 PM in the council chambers at City Hall located at 910 South Friendswood Drive, Friendswood, Texas. Item one, call to order. Item two, communication from the public committee liaisons. To comply with the provisions of the Open Meeting Act, the commission may not deliberate on subjects discussed under this agenda item, however, the commission may direct such subjects to be placed on a regular commission agenda for discussion and/or possible action. Do we have anyone that would like to address the commission from the public? Seeing none, we'll move to item three, the consent agenda. These items are considered routine or ministerial in nature and will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the items unless a commissioner or citizen so requests, in which case the item would be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. We have item A, minutes from the September 21st, 2017, regular meeting, and item B, the minutes from the October 5th, 2017, special meeting. Do I have a motion?
No, we accept both minutes as opposed. Second.
All right. All those in favor? Aye. Very good. Action items. According to the Planning and Zoning Rules of Procedure, all of the, all action of the commission shall be made by an affirmative vote of four or more members of the commission present at such commission meetings. Item four, consideration and possible action regarding the site plan for Rancho Restaurant to be located at 2131 West Parkwood Avenue. Aubrey, you want to update us here?
Can we get a motion and a second first?
Oh, sorry. Yes.
It's okay.
Sorry about that.
Second.
So, this is a new freestanding restaurant that's proposed at the fountain at Friendswood Development. The private street, Thomas Trace Boulevard, was built in the last year or so. It's been a project that's been going on. There is the shopping center down there where the Center Court Pizza is. So, this is going to be a freestanding building. If you're facing the building where Center Court Pizza is, it's going to be to the right between the building and Thomas Trace Boulevard. It is subject to the C O D requirements. They don't have any outstanding comments. And I believe we have the applicant here if you have any questions.
Okay. Joe, you want to kick off any discussion, any questions you have?
Glad to do so. I actually had one question for you, Aubrey, if you could help me on one thing. I noted that 15 of the spaces were marked, parking spaces were marked as compact. I assume that that, do they still count as parking spaces there? Okay.
They do. Up to 20% of your required parking can be compact car spaces. They are smaller, like a foot narrower and two feet, two or three feet shorter, but they have to be labeled on the site as compact car. So, they will, on our final inspection, will make sure they're labeled.
Okay, great. That was just one question. And you said there is someone here representing Rancho? Did have two quick questions. And they're, and they're very, very easy ones. First of all, the building's a great-looking building, so it's a really well-done. One, I noticed on the landscape plan that you had all the trees identified where they're going and the spacing and so forth, but I did note that there were a number of plants that just weren't shown there, the, I guess, what was it, the wax lagerstroms? I assume they're just spread around, or if you could, where are those being located?
Do you have a drawing?
No, you can just tell me in general. I was just curious.
Oh, some of the areas, we have it clustered. Some is, is spread along the two-foot-on-center as required.
Okay. I, I just was curious, is there all in one location, but you're saying they're kind of put around as strategically?
Yes.
Okay. And the, my last question was, I noted the cultured stone on the front of the building. What's the rest of the wall structure? What is that outer covering?
This is stucco.
Those are all the, all the questions that I had. Thank you.
Dick, any questions?
I have a couple. First, I was wondering about sidewalks. I saw sidewalks on 528. Is there a sidewalk on Thomas Trace?
Yes, sir.
Okay. It was, it had a different ledge, you know? It looked different, but I was trying to figure that out. Oh, thank you. Another question I had was, I drove down there today and checked it out, and I, I guess I didn't realize it was, it's really part of the same shopping center area, so I assume that the parking area will be like that. It'll be similar to what's in front of the other.
Yes. It's contiguous to it. It has an interparcial connector between them.
Okay, great. Is there, I wasn't sure, based on what I read, is there provision for outdoor seating, like on a patio area?
Yes, sir, we do. In the, in the back, correct.
Okay. And the last one was, how, with our recent experience with water and drainage and stuff, I can't help but just ask. So, what, the basic plan, I guess, is that water from the property will feed back to the detention pond in the rear?
Yes.
Is that the way it works?
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Eric?
Could you introduce yourself, sir?
Yes, my name is Sal Tint. I'm the engineer record on this project.
I agree with Joe. I think it's a really, really attractive building. I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions. Great-looking building. Looking forward to it.
Thank you.
And I'm the same. No questions from me, so.
Wonderful.
If there's any other discussion, is there another motion we might consider?
Those do approve the, the second.
Okay. All those in favor? See, we're unanimous, so.
Thank you. We should be starting in November.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item five, presentation by Dan Rucker, property owner and developer, to request that Blackhawk extension be removed from the major thoroughfare plan. Is there any intro you want to do, Aubrey, or?
Dan is a local business owner and property owner, and just requested to have the Planning and Zoning Commission as an audience tonight for his request. So, we'll hear his request, and then we do have it as a discussion item after his presentation. So, if y'all have any questions, we can discuss it.
And then I'm clicking.
One question. Am I, are we just to discuss tonight?
Yes, yes.
I'm going to just try and see. Yeah, it's working on there. And then I got a pointer. Okay. Thank you. Hello, everyone. I'm sorry I haven't got to meet y'all yet. I know a few of you. I promised Aubrey that I wouldn't take but 20 minutes of your time, so I'm, I'm going to maybe go a little bit fast on several slides that I'd like to present to you, but just in case, I'm Dan Rucker. Our company is Coastal Bend Property Development. It's been a number of years since we've had the pleasure of gaining an audience with planning and zoning and city council here. Our most notable accomplishments within the City of Friendswood to date would be the Forester Friendswood, and then were the owners and operators of Timber Creek Golf Club. So, what my objective here this evening is to do two things. To, the city invested a lot of money several years back in some heavy infrastructure out in the Panhandle area, and in a few years after that, they made another serious investment in the medians and in the landscaping and irrigation and beautification of that corridor. And I've been asked for about the last 10 years when something was going to happen out there. And short of being able to own all of the Panhandle, we do own the majority of it, but the, the purpose tonight is to try to just paint a picture and bring the commission and eventually the council up to speed on just what the real picture is, what the physical circumstances are with the Panhandle area. The city's already spent some serious money out there. I would imagine, like most people that make investments, are looking for the return, and we genuinely want to help accomplish that. And timing is so critical, but maybe timing is getting to that time. So, with that, I'm going to start with an overview of the, of the Friendswood Panhandle. This picture, basically, in the green-sheeted area, that is the city limits, if I can point in this immediate area, that is the city limits confined within the Webster unit. The Webster unit is an over 4,000-acre oil field that was originally established by Umbol Oil and Gas, and then eventually ExxonMobil, and then about four years ago, they sold the entire field to Denbury Resources. So, today, that original Umbol Oil and Gas lease that was established in 1937, and then had multiple renditions up and through about the mid-'70s when the unit was established, the original 1937 lease actually encompasses all of the Forester Friendswood, goes over to Melody Lane, has all this area outside the unit, and many areas down here, but the area was unitized back in the '70s to confine the production to just the area, the over 4,000 acres that's within that area. So, that the area inside the city, including Timber Creek, all the way up to the Breo site, all the way to Hard Corner Beamer Road, and down to the unit lines, about 600 acres that is in the City of Friendswood that lies within the unit. Understanding that, when Timber Creek Golf Club was built, the oil field was thought to be at the end of its life. That was back in 2001 that the first 18 holes in Timber Creek opened. Exxon was the owner of the, of the field and the minerals then, and we came in and built Timber Creek behind them plugging and abandoning wells and the field activity, the production of the field was moving to the east. And, and to this day, there are only two producing wells that are in the City of Friendswood that are inside the unit area, and that is 3902 here and 3901 at the top, and there's a third well that exists that's shut in currently, but it, from time to time, goes back into production. This line is the edge of the Webster unit out of that 4,000-acre unit that we were talking about that runs through Friendswood. That's right at Hope Village Road right here, and then the field comes up and takes off a northerly angle, and, and so that little part of Timber Creek is out, and the rest of it is all in. This is taken from the city's website, is basically, it's, it, it shows you the, the grid of the plugged and abandoned and the two active wells that are in the city limits of Friendswood. And conspicuously, you'll notice how six are lying, the bullseye dead center underneath the proposed route for Blackhawk, and another four are either very close to it or, or, or really close to the proposed right one. But again, there's this well and that well, the two red wells, and then intermittently there is one other one. Both of them lie out here on what I'm calling the Beamer Road track, which is 114 acres from Turkey Creek down to 2351, and about 1,200, 1,300 feet alone, 2351, we own that piece of property. This, this is an additional exhibit that shows a blue water line and a light green sanitary sewer line. This is some of that major trunk line infrastructure that I was talking about that the city has invested out there. Here you've got the regional water plant that takes a 24-inch line from a City of Houston 36-inch main and takes a 24-inch water line to that water plant for the city. Extending back from that water plant are 12-inch trunk lines that terminate out at, at Beamer Road along this old platted road, and then come over and then down to 2351. In addition to that, the city has a gravity 12-inch trunk line that runs from here back to the list station and from here back to the list station. That list station is over, is over 20 feet deep, has, I think, three 15-horsepower pumps in it, and to date, as far as I know, the only thing that's on it is the clubhouse and the pavilion facilities in Timber Creek. The well numbers that are indicated out there are the wells that are the subject of a lot of discussion these days with Denbury. As I told you, whenever Timber Creek was in production, Exxon was, was abandoning the field, abandoning the, the wells, plugging them, and, and moving on to more productive parts of the field whenever it was basically pushing under its own gas. That gas play was blown down about eight or 10 years ago. Friendswood was, I think, looking for a stripper well company that apparently wasn't, couldn't meet their price. Denbury showed up with some new tech, technology, and they, what, if, if y'all aren't familiar with Denbury Resources, they have a perpetual source of CO2 gas in, in, in southern Mississippi. They take that by pipeline all the way across Louisiana and southeast Texas up to just a point just south of the Webster field. It now goes over and is driving production at the Hastings Field in Pearland, and they have started to convert this field over in the Ellington Base area. It's a dynamic process, actually. A company that can move in to abandon previously thought used-up oil fields, use a greenhouse gas that's domestically produced, to recover sweet domestic crude, it's, it's, it's a dynamic play, and when they bought the field, oil was north of $100 a barrel. So, it's, it's no mystery that a lot of oil companies have been reshuffling, but they are pretty confident in, in what they can eventually make the recovery cost out there. So, contrary to Exxon putting Friendswood in its rearview mirror, not only has Exxon, has Denbury now kind of come back, but what they hope to do is be able to come back in a big way and actually get active in production, at least on this end of the field, if not so much in Friendswood proper. Friendswood has a drill ordinance that excludes any new oil wells from being drilled within the city's carpet limits, within 1,500 feet of a building, virtually any kind of a building. What Friendswood cannot preclude is the ability of the mineral owner and the producer to go back and revisit existing plugged wells. P and A, plugged and abandoned, is a, is a semantic term. It's abandoned until they want to go back and revisit that well again and drill down through that plug. If they decide they want to do that within the city's limits, they can't be any closer than 150 feet to a building. And in this area, except for one tract in this entire unit inside of the city's limits, it's a single 10-acre tract that lies inside the unit, which is that 10-acre tract right there. All this other area, even the Forester Friendswood, is still labored with the original 1937 surface lease, but the city's moratorium against drilling within residentially zoned communities negated that ability and allowed the exception to the title, which allowed us to build that, that subdivision. So, the point is, is that Denbury doesn't own the land, but they are the largest surface controller out there, and at some point, they have to be dealt with, and we're in constant communication and negotiation with them. So, and I, and I can go into more detail as and when necessary. This is a, a preliminary plan for drainage in the area that would take it from Hope Village Road and the entrance driveway into Timber Creek and pretty much take care of the properties along the rear, not the fronting properties on 2351, over and through Timber Creek and over and through this, this 114 acres over here. Moche Express that operates on what's the old Ray Whitley tract, the Whitley brothers still own it, they expect to sell that to Mr. Herbert Buffalo, the owner of Moche Express, this next month. It's supposed to close. The owners of the eight acres around the city's water plant are in contract with us to close on that property between now and the end of the year if we can work out some feasible issues. This person right here is a 10-acre owner, Mr. John Norman. He actually still lives back there. He is the resident owner that's behind the Cedarwood Development that did the dance studio and the exercise deal. These were the people that, if anyone's around then, that were trying to permit a distillery facility in on that, but that, it never happened. But he's building his third building now, and that's the same tract that High Point Insurance intends to come build their new office building in front over there. The two gentlemen next to that are, they, a body shop and a garage shop owner Cedric and I think Charles, or whatever his name, it's, it's in the PowerPoint. And that's about it. And then I didn't, I, I have not really visited with the owners and operators of these little commercial facilities on the front end, but if, if that will make up pretty much everybody in the neighborhood, if we proceed to purchase of this property, we're the current owners of that 16 and a half acres there, we're the owners of that 10 acres here, and that 10 acres right there is a gentleman named Nick Deutsch, who currently has proposed Benz Garage, a car condo project, that he's got an approved site plan on over there now. I didn't, I didn't want to belabor this, but for years, there's been talk about, and I often get sent information about prospects for lodging facilities out in that inner town. There is a, a company that the city had engaged several years ago, back when the Whitcomb property was in play. There was a hotel study that was done back then that didn't come out real good. That was a gentleman by the name of Randy McCaslin, who used to be with PKF Consulting, I think it's, he's with CBRE, Richard Ellis Company, it's, I think, now. He also is a, is a fellow associate professor at the Baron Hilton Restaurant and Hotel Hospitality Management School at the University of Houston. Dennis Reynolds, who is the dean of that department, Dr. Reynolds here, is a, is a Friendswood resident. Dr. Keegan Black is a gentleman that Dr. Reynolds put me in touch with because I wanted to go to a source and not have to spend $15,000 for a hotel study on a hunch that I just wanted to get some backup on what was probably the case. But at any rate, we did a phase-one study, and the result pretty much was that the Panhandle area at least is not the opportune spot, especially for a resort-style lodging facility. And it's, it's not rocket science. Actually, if we all think about what are we looking for if we travel to another place, and what do we want in close proximity between restaurants and shopping and all those kinds of things, and when you look at that, of course, the Panhandle doesn't have any of that to offer. What I would, what suggests is the city is wanting to still entertain a, a study and to try to reach out and find out between conference facilities, meeting rooms, lodging of every type. Like I said, Dr. Reynolds is a Friendswood resident, Dr. Black is, is, is teed up, they've already got the initial phase of a study done because they did incorporate all three entrances into Friendswood 518, 528, and 2351. If they, they, I think they're, I think they're kind of talking like they might even make a semester project out of Friendswood and lodging and conference facilities. If that was something that the city was maybe interested in, and if that was something that the city wanted to explore, I could certainly help make those introductions. This is the flood map that is currently on the city's website. It is not the latest Harris County adopted flood map as of January of this year. We've seen four flood maps, including the one that was just adopted in January of this year, since we've owned the properties out there. The floodplain creep continues to grow. Before Harvey, I would have taken hard exception. I still take exception with the accuracy of the maps, but God only knows what the next flood maps are going to look like. So, I'm, it's, it's interesting because the area above Turkey Creek up here where we have a waterworks facility with a nearly 12,000-foot office warehouse and about an eight-acre pipe yard that has a 100-year line just below the, the office warehouse, Harvey never even got close to that building and didn't even get across half the pipe yard, but oh, probably about 10 or 15% of the homes in the Forester Friendswood, several of them had feet of water in them, and that was, that was something that during Allison, nobody got water even in, a few people got it in their garage. So, this is, we're in the middle of trying to figure this out ourselves, but at any rate, the, I've overlaid the proposed thoroughfare plan for Blackhawk again, and much of the area that it traverses in the 114 acres is either impacted either in the floodway or the floodplain, but more importantly is the fact that we've got plugged wells that are underneath the site, if, of underneath the proposed route. The, just briefly, I'll, I'll, I'll let you know that years ago, I, I had an audience with the Economic Development Committee at that time that was appointed here in Friendswood, and we were in the process of acquiring periphery properties around the golf course. We, we didn't, I don't even know if we even owned a, a, a single interest in this piece of property yet, but I actually brought this overlay to the city, and Karen Capps had been here for a while, and we were always talking about the Panhandle. The idea of trunk line utilities hadn't even come up out here yet, but we, we were, we said, what if we went out here and just looked at this, let's put a study together on this thing and, and see if it's, if it's practical, and that's how it got started. It got started, this is a sequence of the city's thoroughfare plan over time that it has published over the years, and that conversation about doing something like this in the Panhandle area was started around sometime after 2001, about 2002, 2003. That was before Harris County abandoned what used to be Blackhawk that was going to extend across what is now Section 12 in the forest and end up over on Dixie Farm Road through this area. When Harris County abandoned the extension of Blackhawk is whenever I came to the EDC and were talking to people on staff about maybe something like this. And it, if I, if I needed it to happen in a hurry, it couldn't have happened as fast as it did, but, but at, but at any rate, we, we come up to today, and we're going to talk about what's actually happening in the Panhandle, and this is Harris County Precinct 1. After the abandonment of Blackhawk Boulevard, the Harris County Precinct 1 Road and Bridge Department had not been contacted or included in the planning or any extension of the proposed replacement of Blackhawk, including where it would connect to Beamer Road. That was Beamer Road as it was then and as it physically still sits today. Now Harris County is in the final planning of the improvements for the next phase of Beamer Road at the FM 2351 intersection, and, I'm sorry, and I have included the schematic here, but we've got about a 10-foot-long roads rollout. Murad and Patrick have this schematic on a PDF file. I don't know if they can plot it up, but basically what's getting ready to happen is if we're familiar with where Harris County just completed about a year ago, the four lanes that terminates at Tall Ships and then transitions back to a two-lane coming towards 2351. What they're going to do now is they're actually going to leave that where, there, and it's going to, it's going to stay in its two-lane configuration, but then it's going to come, this is the shell station on the corner, and this is that equipment rental place that's at the furthest end, and so just beyond that area is about where the transition will take place again until it goes full width at about 250 feet prior to the intersection where there will be a dedicated left, straight, and a right turn lane. And that will be coming from both directions. This is the 114 acres I was telling you about at the Hard Corner of Beamer and 2351, so the bottleneck that is there pretty much all the time now is going to So the bottleneck that is there pretty much all the time now is going to get some relief. But this, but the county has said that this is the money they have on their capital improvements projects, which was published for end of year this year, that they have allocated for the project. They don't know when they're going to have any more funds allocated, and the biggest concern is this network of pipelines that crosses. Then as it goes further towards Dixie Farm Road out this way, that pipeline crossings and the infrastructure for the transmission lines and oil field gets a lot more cluttered up. So they're saying that instead of holding the project back to try to get all that fixed, they're at least going to remedy the intersection at the time. In my opinion, the, this will probably be the last time we see the county. I'm not counting on seeing Harris County on Beamer Road after this next phase in my lifetime. So with that, we have, it's always been the case that this, this one hundred and fourteen acres on the corner out there is an ag, and we were never that concerned in conjunction with working out issues with Denbury about burning daylight until the county actually showed up. Now that they've shown their hand and announced that they would like to be in construction by this time next year, the, the project coordinator for Precinct One just told me the other day that he actually would like to be through construction by this time next year. So we are working with the city now to relocate a trunk water line that the city inherited whenever 2351 was widened, that runs up past this Shell Station and comes out here actually on private property that the city sells water through now. We're trying to get that relocated back properly within the city's limits, complete the loop then of the trunk line that's out here now, and, and trying to see if we continue taking that water up to Turkey Creek, past the Ford Line Water Works, up to two twenty acre tract owners and another ten acre tract owner who will all have for sale signs on their properties right now. But that's, that's something that we're going to see how far we can use Harris County up on, on this project. Me throwing in my contribution on the, on the award that they would for the right-of-way taking, and then we'll be asking the city to help us additionally to that, but we haven't got that through the city manager's office and through city engineering yet. Harris County has no intention of cooperating with the city on any part of any future Blackhawk extension. They are not accommodating the possibility of an intersection on this, on the Precinct One Road for the Blackhawk extension, and, and the city has no money to build the Blackhawk extension. The proposed abandonment is just the first step that we are trying to accomplish in getting the property up and getting the surface clear so that we can proceed development of the The reasons I've cited, aside from the fact that physically that there are plugged wells underneath the proposed right-of-way, is that in 2004, when we were presenting this as a what-if scenario, and let's research this and do a study and see if we can do impact studies, traffic analysis, poll the stakeholders, all those kinds of things, none of that, none of that was addressed. I don't know how it got out of EDC, past planning and zoning, and the council, and adopted in a resolution as has as it was. It was amazing to me then. It wasn't, wasn't a big consequence as we weren't in any particular position for it to be in our way at the time, but, but now it is. When I say it inhibits the current and planned uses of the property, is typically whenever you have these huge major thoroughfares with these overlay requirements, they are usually also servicing as conduits and can help blend their tremendous expense by being the conduit for trunk line services and for drainage. In this particular situation, the city has already spent a couple of million dollars in matching funds and EDC grants to install heavy trunk line utilities that already exist today. The drainage, by virtue of what's already being accommodated and what is planned, will not need a trunk line corridor like a major thoroughfare to act as a conduit to carry those utilities. The owners that will need to piggyback on a ditch system or a drainage system or people that we're cooperating with now. It's never been published, it's never been, as far as I know, it's never even been an agenda item for council to entertain funding that Blackhawk thoroughfare out there. And I do not think there are any intentions in the future. And the city's only approach so far is on Cedar Woods Developments plat was asking them to hold out a reserve, I think sixty feet on their right, for thirty feet for their half of a sixty. That grew to forty feet for one half of an eighty on the Benzema Garage plat, but the resolution itself actually speaks to a hundred foot right-of-way. So where it's been applied, it's been applied ambiguously. The petition that is signed has every business owner and every property owner that touches the thoroughfare that adjoins either side of the Hope Village driveway into the course all the way through and behind the Cedar Wood Development. So this is something that I'm going to be presenting to the first council meeting, I believe, next month. It's, it's, I understand that planning and zoning is going to be taking up the city's major thoroughfare plan for review in the near future. Timing was such that we needed to try to get this out in front. I'll be asking the council to, to give me some direction and to tell me the way we can most expeditiously abandon the Blackhawk right-of-way, if in fact they concur that it's probably the right thing to do. I do not know, and forgive me for being short on protocol, I do not know if they will eventually come back and ask y'all to vote up or down on a recommendation of that. And if you, you need another audience or any more information from me, at that time, I'll certainly be glad to attend to it. Sure, I went past my twenty minutes, but if there's any questions, a few that I need to address, I'm here to do whatever. Otherwise, I just appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation. So let's move to item six, discussion regarding Mr. Rucker's request under item five. Do I have a motion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a motion.
I'm looking to discuss this.
Discuss.
Second.
So I guess my first question, Aubrey, would be the, the process for review, upgrade, changes to the major thoroughfare plan. Line us out on that, and then we can begin to ask questions.
Absolutely. So the existing major thoroughfare plan was adopted in 2004. It was reviewed in 2008 and 2011, I believe. We did, planning and zoning did review it, didn't really see, you know, the need for any changes. The Blackhawk extension and another Blackhawk extension actually on the Whitcomb property were discussed, but there wasn't any compelling reasons to take them off of the plan at that time, so it was just left alone. So this current adopted plan was adopted by resolution in 2004. A resolution is a little bit different process than an ordinance. In that resolution, it does indicate that the Planning and Zoning Commission did make a recommendation on that resolution, which is not required, but it's typical, you know, our, historically, the Planning and Zoning Commission maintains and gives recommendations on all of our plans for the city. So this item is on the planning subcommittee's to-do list for consideration. If we get, so my, the plan is right now for the subcommittee to take that up. The next time the subcommittee meets, you know, we can adjust the order of our considerations if we, you know, feel the need. We would move forward with bringing it back to the full commission for discussion and then eventually make a recommendation to city council. If we get different direction from city council after he gives his presentation in November, then, you know, we can go from there. But the plan right now is to proceed, you know, as we've planned and been planning, you know, for the past year with that to-do list.
So if I understand correctly, the normal process, just in the, the planning reviews that, that we do and information, it's going to be on that, it's going to come up for that review.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then at which time, planning and zoning would make any recommendation? Are there any, does anybody have any, any questions or about the information that's been presented or?
I have one. So.
As, as I understood from the presentation, the desire is for the owner to be able to develop the property. Is that?
The request at this time is to remove the requirement for, so to remove the Blackhawk extension off of the major thoroughfare plan. Because anytime we get a plat or, all that property out there has to be platted. So anytime we get a plat with that on our major thoroughfare plan, we have to require the dedication of that roadway.
Okay. Thank you.
Eric, any questions?
You, Aubrey. What's it zoned out there today?
All of the property, mine, it's industrial.
All industrial.
Yeah. The, about three hundred feet along 2351, the frontage on 2351 is CSC, which is Commercial Community Shopping Center, but other than that, everything back there is industrial.
And this may be getting ahead, but is the intent to keep it zoned that way or to change it? What would be the intent? Thank you.
Brett, any questions?
Well, first and foremost, thanks for an excellent presentation. It has a great history, brought us all up to speed, very, very good, very informative. Just kind of repeat what Aubrey said, no, this was on our radar for the subcommittee to start. We were supposed to start back in August, but Harvey came, so everything's delayed, and we don't want to take up too much of city staff's time. So we'll be resuming the committee here pretty soon, but this probably won't be, we won't be making a recommendation to council probably in, probably two, three months from now, or maybe two months from now. So it sounds like your schedule's much ahead of that, so you're proceeding with the abandonment process, so I would recommend doing that. So that'd be a separate process from, from what we're doing, correct?
Abandonment of?
Of the Blackhawk extension.
So, well, he has to, we have to remove it from the map in order to not require, you know, the dedication of that right-of-way.
Right. So it's a separate process. Our process is going to take much longer. He's proceeding with the application of abandonment, so that will be a totally separate process from our subcommittee.
Well, so his request for abandonment is for us to remove it off that map.
Okay.
So there's no other, there's no other process.
Right. So that would be kind of, would not be part of our subcommittee process, it'd be a whole P and Z process.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Joe, any questions?
Yes, thank you. I think it's kind of a simple question, but I just want to, I don't want to assume anything. So what harm is the current situation where that extension is on the thorough, on the plan right now? What harm, what harm is it causing the property owners? Oh, could you, yes, could you get the mic? Please.
We get to speak to Mike. Is the corner still working?
It's all down, but the mic comes up.
Okay. Well, if we're looking at the hard corner of Blackhawk and 2351 now, where it dead-ends in front of Frankie Carter Park, there is about a six acre tract that is, has multiple undivided interest owners in it. Two of them are charities, and it has been impossible up to now to work a friendly negotiable purchase of that property. It's in limbo. Immediately behind that property is Frankie Carter Park. And Precinct One has told me a number of times that, not only will they not contribute any money or services towards the extension of Blackhawk, but they'll never give up one square foot of Frankie Carter Park for that. And if we had the picture up, it would show how there had been a, kind of a squirrel dog leg in the approach to Blackhawk where it intersects 2351 now, to conspicuously maneuver that around Frankie Carter Park.
Right. You can see that.
That was my drawing. I'm not an engineer. Whether that's feasible or not, and it just shows a line, it certainly doesn't show a hundred foot wide right-of-way. And the, the little panhandle piece of property that actually runs between Frankie Carter right here, we own that piece of property also. This, in fact, was going to be the original entrance driveway into Timber Creek before we were able to acquire, before we owned the property, a driveway by easement where it actually is today. This piece of property here is owned by a gentleman by the name of Cosm Consori, that's thirty acres right there, and this piece of property is a gentleman by the name of Bloodworth and a partner, who had that older-looking storage facility, boat and RV storage facility over there. None of these people are, Mr. Bloodworth is not interested in, in surrendering his property across the back, and Mr. Consori is of the same opinion, but we're not, we're not asking them to join in this petition. I would have no objections to seeing Blackhawk installed if it were going to be funded, if the city were going to build it, or there was going to be a funding mechanism to reimburse it. All the city is able to do now is to ask for any of the people presenting plaits along this area to leave out thirty feet on one plat, forty feet on another plat. The resolution and the, and the amendment speaks to a hundred foot right-of-way. And in the hopes that somebody someday is going to show up with money and want to spend it on filling in that hole, I think it'd be wonderful to have a three-lane continuous turn lane or a four-lane that could be traversing these properties, except that was all going to be contingent upon creating a zone back then when this idea was first floated, like a 380 management district, like a TERS, like something that would be able to recover the ad valorem and the revenues that would be generated from having this thoroughfare, which at that time, we would have designed to have held the trunk line utilities and drainage to help offset the huge cost of such a large infrastructure project. Those costs, that cost sharing, that ability to blend and share all this is evaporated in that the trunk line utilities are already there, and the, and the flood maps just keep creeping more and more. No, I don't particularly have any objection to it, but all the city's going to do is, is make me hold out for it, or maybe even I can reach up and physically install the profile that it would be asking for in its worst-case scenario, and use that to connect points of my project within my plat, but it would dead-end going nowhere, and I'm not going to get any cooperation out of Harris County where I want to tie in the Beamer Road, especially now that I know probably for the rest of my life, that I'm going to be living with a two-lane Beamer after it transitions back from this four-lane at the intersection. If everybody had been on the same page, if we could have gotten all the stakeholders together, we could have got the county at the table, and we could have put this on the board properly from the beginning, it would have made sense. The city wouldn't have invested millions of dollars of infrastructure out there in literally the cart before the horse, and they'd be waiting around wondering if somebody's ever going to show up and use these utilities.
Okay. I don't, thank you. And stay up there if you would, I just have another follow-up.
Okay.
I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth that I really- I mean, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I really want to make sure that I understand what you said, and I think I do. If I had to shorten that, have I got it right that really your opinion is, is that it's encumbering your development and your use of the properties that you do own, and it's not worth encumbering that for a project that may never happen in your mind?
Will never happen, in my mind.
Okay. Fair enough.
Right.
Just wanted to follow up. The petition you had wasn't dated. Is that a recent petition?
That figures. Yes. Those signatures, probably the oldest signature on the petition would be 90 days old.
Okay. And I had one follow-up, and I think it's for Aubrey. Are there current right-of-ways along that property now, or the city don't have any right-of-ways or easements?
The Benzey Garage Development did dedicate a portion of the right-of-way. The Clearwood Business Park, I think he referenced that earlier, did dedicate a portion, but it is within an Exxon drill site.
Drill site.
And so if the city moved forward with that, we would have to work with Exxon to work out the ownership since it is a drill site.
And Aubrey, the Benzey Garage that is on their site plan, but it has not gone to plat yet. So that's not of record, but.
That plat is recorded.
But it did record that site plan, they recorded?
Yeah, it shows on your drainage map.
Without, did they ever present construction plans on that? So all their construction drawings were put on that? Then it would require an amended plat for them to get rid of that, but he is on this petition. Nick Deutsch, the owner of that development, is one of the signers of the petition.
Great. Well, thank you very much for the presentation as well.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you for answering my questions.
No, I want to say thank you also for the history and the education there. I don't have any questions that relate to the information you conveyed. The questions I have are really about the purpose of the major thoroughfare plan, the objective, and I think those are all things that come up as part of the subcommittee and that discussion. So I don't, I don't think it, this is the appropriate time to talk about those, and I think that'll be a natural part of that process. So, you know, I think we'll continue with our process, and, you know, and if city council, as a result of your meeting with them, directs us to do something specific, well, we will address it at that time, so.
We have other changes that need to be made to the thorough, and updates, you know, that need to be made to the thoroughfare plan, so, you know, it's going to be a little bit of a process to get that done, but we'll definitely get going.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Item 7. Are we on item 7? Consideration and Possible Action Regarding the Future Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Dates. Aubrey?
Our next regular meeting would be November 2nd, but we, the majority of the commissioners are going to be at the Texas APA Conference. It's our annual planning conference, so we're looking forward to that. So we will not have that regular meeting, and then November 16th will be our second regular meeting in November.
Okay. Item 8, Communications From the Commissioners. Joe, you want to start anything?
No, I have nothing.
Dick? Nothing?
No.
And I have nothing as well. From council, our liaison, Jim?
Very interesting discussion tonight. I was going to talk to you all about the coming bond election, Gouston County bond election, which the county has allocated 3.8 million Friendswood's portion to give back to the city from our tax money to the county to build Friendswood Lakes Boulevard, which has been on the master thoroughfare plan, I think, for 20 years. Like Mr. Rucker said, we just don't have the money to build these thoroughfares. They're multimillion-dollar things. Mo and I spent several days with the Commissioners' Court, and we did get them to agree if the council will put up a million dollars, they will match that with another million, which would be 5.8, which would pretty well build all four lanes of that road to West Ranch, which they're already, almost got their portion complete to the city limits, which I would like to see all four lanes built to scratch it off the list. And it would help the traffic at the intersection. Anybody that goes over there knows what the traffic is going to the junior high. It would also, since we moved the police station, I was sitting at the intersection the other day, and an EMS paramedic lives in Westover Park, and they were, had their lights on, their sirens coming to, they got to the intersection, and it was total gridlock, and the lady accidentally, she just turned off her siren and light, and she had to sit there. There was no place to go, and instead of people trying to, she just thought, and she was right, just wait till the light, till we can get through. But anyway, that's a very important length, especially for the school getting buses from Wentzong over to the junior high. But anyway, and I was thinking with our new fire station that we dedicated this past weekend, it might be an alternate route to get over into West Ranch. But anyway, it's a free road, and the county is generous enough to give us our money back, and that's how we did Melody Lane with '08 bond money. We did Sunview, Skyview, and it paid a portion of draining downtown. And Dan's right, I don't think Harris County has ever built a road for Friendswood, and I don't look for them to start now. But Gouston County, through the, it takes time. I mean, they originally built Sunset for us, and so this is another opportunity, and early voting starts Monday. And so anyway, that's a good project. Also, we kind of got a slow start on picking up debris, but we finished the first round, and probably got to start on the second round, and making headway on that. And psychologically, our homeowners that have to walk through that debris to get to their home, it's just, it's just hard. And I personally cleaned up my son's debris, and I mean, for me to take my front-end loader and load my grandkids' toys and stuff in that dumpster, it's tough. I mean, it's just tough. But anyway, we'll get there, and we'll be back, and thank you guys for what you do.
Thank you. Steph, Aubrey, any?
Yes, I emailed the 2017 DRC report late, and I have paper copies to give you. I forgot to put them on your computers beforehand, but if y'all look at that and have any questions, September was another skinny month on development meetings, but there were a few, so if you have any questions after you get that report, let me know. I did link it as the backup material on the agenda. And then just an update, October 2nd, city council did approve the second reading of Verizon Wireless Tower behind the Walgreens, and then approved the second reading for the zone change for Vergata property at Leisure Lane and 518. So that's just an update on projects.
Okay. All right. With that, I believe we stand adjourned.